The really tall one. Dry cat.
Wonder why his name? Ah!
And you know, anyway, he ended up, you know, after a while, he did it so often that we were just like, that's why.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Uh, let's see, no?
They're coming.
Tommy Andrew.
I wish I would have pictured those. Those are my boys.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, this one lives in Tarboro.
Okay.
And this one, it lives between Scott and that.
Oh, okay.
Another wonderful, uh, maybe?
About an hour and ten minutes.
We have something exciting though.
Always something exciting.
How was your Christmas?
It was fun. It was good.
Good?
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. I'm also happy to see your Christmas decorations still up. I love them. I love them.
The one in the town, yeah, yeah. I took down the Christmas tree, but the one in the, in around the town.
No, I mean, like the little ones up there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I watched it.
One of these is my client.
Oh, okay. Are you gonna help? You gonna help me with that Duke Energy Bill?
Huh?
You gonna help me with that Duke Energy Bill?
They, they.
I need, I wanna go back to the office and double check. I'm pretty sure that's my.
I mean, they, they separate the Christmas lights from everything else.
They're supposed to be fixing.
They should, but they don't.
Well, she.
I think by now it actually.
It's a lot.
Hello, good to see you.
How are you?
All right, I was out of town last week when you were emailing us.
Oh, when I, when you were getting eighty thousand emails.
Yeah, well, that's.
Yeah, then I saw eventually you were somewhere else.
Yeah.
My bad.
No, no, no. Glad somebody got back to you, but.
I like stop liking not to write back, so I was just writing three more times.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm back now.
Yeah, they said they were coming. They said they were coming, so hopefully, yeah.
There they are.
Okay.
They were having their meeting before the meeting.
Uh-oh.
Now, look sharp. Look at that hat.
Yeah.
Tie. In that hat, right there.
This morning.
Yeah, just looking sharp.
So he just woke up and. Just going there.
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, I couldn't either. That's why I left it in your table. Go ahead and stand and face the flag.
But, but, but other tails happen. I mean, I.
Summer clock it.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Termination of a quorum, we have it. Approval of last month's minutes. Any questions before we approve those?
I'm making motion. We approved a minutes as written in the packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continued items, the approval and consideration of a project development agreement with Axiom. Is anyone here from Axiom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
If I, if I could ask you to speak into the mic too, please.
Oh, there it is. Yes, 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 yes. Thank you so much. So continued items from last month's meeting, the consideration approval of project development agreement with Axiom Development LLC. And Mr. Manager, could you please update us on that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. So I heard from Mr. White. It was still with his attorney's office and I imagine with the Christmas break, he did not, uh, I, I received no further information, so it's still with his attorney.
Okay, all right. We'll table that again. Do we need a motion to table that? Attorney Edwards?
Please.
I'll make a motion and we table item.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up, new items is a public hearing to adopt the open space and recreation ordinance. Mr. Manager, would you please go over the details?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the ordinance is, um, is one that has been, that is, I don't know that it's common, but it's, there are some communities, including places like Wake Forest, who have a similar ordinance. And what they do is they, um, charge a, um, development fee for the explicit purpose. All the, the money goes into a fund that's dedicated for the acquisition and improvement of open space and recreation facilities. Uh, we, I had some discussions, um, with, um, Attorney Edwards on, uh, the statute, and we're still a little nebulous on that, but I, I don't think it would preclude the board from acting on the ordinance. Uh, if it needed to be further amended, we could always make further amendments. And so the, the fee I recommended to the board is seven hundred and fifty dollars per unit, and that's per residential unit that's created.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so a developer could pay that in lieu of creating the facilities themselves. So if a developer wanted to come in, build playground equipment, or build a public playground, they could do that, or they could pay the in lieu fee.
I think it's, uh, fantastic, and it seems in line with the, uh, the fees that were going on as well that we talked about. Uh, I think there was some compromise on that, and I think this puts room for that seven fifty, and I think it's good. I think it's fantastic. Any questions before we approve this?
We gotta have a public hearing. I make a motion and go into public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be, uh, amend the schedule, uh, to include.
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, can we get a motion for a public hearing? Thank you.
We're already there.
Okay. Oh. I thought we had already voted to, uh, to move forward with it. Do we have any public comments on this excellent, uh, project that the town is, is, uh, going through right now? Lots of diligent work. Get that. Yes, come on.
I, I have questions about it.
About that, right? About that topic. If you can state your name and.
Uh, I need two questions.
Newspaper address.
Uh, two or three west Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so, uh, do you foresee this as going to one town fund to develop a series of parks and rec projects? Or do you see this as funding smaller, like, uh, a series of small parks? If you're hitting up different developers, are you thinking about Developer A, for example, okay, popping a small playground?
Well, they can do, they can do the fee in lieu of building their own park.
Right.
So instead of every subdivision having their own park, they can do that in lieu. And then the Board of Commissioners would decide how those funds are spent, uh, if they do them in large, uh, chunks, or if they break it up into continuous maintenance and repairs. So that would be a decision of the board.
You're thinking, though, of gathering these funds in a so designated fund just for that, for the development of parks or playground or recreational facilities?
With all the new families. We have so many kids moving to town.
Okay. Do you have any areas in mind where you would?
Any specific details, uh?
Sure, certainly. Well, the, the funds could be used for land acquisition. They could be used to, uh, construct facilities. They could be used to maintain facilities. Uh, they could be used to expand facilities. So it really, um, this is just the, the sort of the gestational step in it. So, I mean, this is, um, and again, I think the mayor is a hundred percent correct. Um, the way the ordinance is written, a developer can either create the facilities themselves, bring them to the town, uh, as part of the subdivision and land development process, or they can pay the fee in lieu of, of doing just that. So it really, it's, uh, gives the town and the developer some flexibility. The next step beyond this would be the, um, rollout of some type of conditional zoning, so that, um, the, this board could work with developers to kind of get a product that both would satisfy the developer and satisfy the town and what, what needs it.
That's given that they, they wanna make their own.
Correct. It, it gives, it, it, uh, allows some flexibility in terms of density, in terms of amenities, and so on and so forth.
Would this be, would this ordinance be retroactive for current developments, or only from brand-new developments from later on?
It, it's really for brand-new developments from this point forward.
Great questions. Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to ask any questions? We are in the public hearing, uh, about the open space and recreation ordinance. If there's no other public comments, we get a motion to go back into regular session.
Make a motion and go back into regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, now we're moving on to amend the twenty-five, uh, year twenty-five fee schedule, uh, to include open and recreation fee. And can we put that with the same motion as approving the ordinance?
Yep. Uh, could we get two votes?
Okay.
One for adopting the ordinance and one for setting the, that just makes it a lot cleaner.
Fantastic. So we're gonna split that into two votes if we can get a motion to approve and adopt the open space recreation ordinance.
I'm making motion to approve the open space ordinance and recreation ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. In that second vote, amend the fiscal year twenty-five fee schedule to include the open space and recreation fee.
Make a motion. We amend the schedule to include the fee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, this is some great news right here. Capital Project Fund, three million dollars wastewater project. Can you please, uh, we'd love to hear some information about this.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the, um, the last legislative appropriation that came from, um, Representative Chesser and Senator Barnes. It was fall of twenty twenty-three, I believe. Um, the three million dollars that was allocated in that appropriation, this establishes the fund so that we can, um, um, initiate the project, um, from that capital fund and set up the reimbursement process through the state, um, DEQ.
So do you need a motion to accept the funds and start the project?
Uh, we have done that already. Commissioner Griffin, this is to actually establish the capital fund.
So you need a motion to establish the fund?
It's the capital fund ordinance, yes.
So then I'd make a motion that we establish the capital fund, uh, project.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, next up is the request to lease the Boy Scout Hut to the local FFW Post.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is American Legion Post. It was my error. I had some confusion. I, I think corrected myself, uh, at some point, but you may have an older version of the agenda. Um, it was approached, um, by, um, Dicky, who is, um, uh, represents Post ninety-one, and I believe he is here to, um, describe to you what he is thinking about the Boy Scout Hut. Um, and if the board is willing, you can take it from here.
We have to go into open hearing for that?
No.
I like it. I think it's wonderful. Amazing, honestly.
So, so, but now we can let Mr. Bass tell us what he's planning to do.
You wanna come on up and tell us? Please share with us. If you'll just please state your name and address.
My name is Dicky Bass. I'm the commander of Post ninety-one, American Legion Post here in Springhoek. Uh, and we were not interested in leasing the building. We're, we're interested in remodeling it. Leave it. It will stay with the town. Of course, I'm, I'm up to whatever decision y'all decide on. But we're just asking that we be able to remodel it. Uh, we've had a little problem ourselves. Uh, we, uh, we went before the board, the table. Uh, they didn't find anything that we had done wrong, other than we didn't file, fill out some proper paperwork. So that all came clear that we wanted, I had to wait for that release so we could, we could go forward. But we would like, we also, the American Legion does not have a permanent place to hold our meetings. We are asking that we share the, the Boy Scout Hut with the Scouts, the American Legion, to share it with them. We won't meet on the same night. Uh, we are, we're, we're willing to do all the demolition, all the construction, all the cleanup. We will take care of all the builds. We do have a few small requests. Um, we do need, I know the town does not remove construction debris. Uh, got two different crews. I have one crew that is gonna dispose of the demolition, or they're gonna tear, tear the building down, and we're gonna leave the concrete, I mean, the block. All the wood will be removed. I'm just requesting, could we get some help? Because the man that I'm on contract to do that, he does not have the equipment to haul off, you know, a sizable amount. We'll, I will get carried off what I possibly can. No problem.
We will, uh, take off what we possibly can, but I wouldn't, if we, it's something that we just can't handle, but we, I'm gonna ask Bobby. Uh, if we cut it into a doable, three and a half, four feet, I'm, I'm not, I know you don't expect twelve, fifteen-foot boards to be laying out that'd be disposed of, but if we break them down, could, could you help us with that? Or?
You guys are talking about rebuilding.
We're remodeling.
Yes, yes, and getting.
All the woodwork will be gone.
Yes, I see.
And when that's all gone, and I'm satisfied with that, then I also have a contract that is gonna come in and rebuild everything from top to bottom.
I know it's gonna be right if you're watching.
Well, we certainly hope so. Uh, I do have a question about the water and the utilities.
Okay.
There is power there, but I'm sure it hadn't been cut on in thirty or forty years. There is, there is a bathroom and there's an outside faucet there, so there is excess to water. Um, we're asking that, we would be glad to take care of the utilities if the town could agree to take care of the water.
Getting it there?
No.
Just the use. You're talking about, you're talking about not charging you for the water.
Right, right.
Okay.
Um, we're only gonna meet once a month. I'm sure that the scouts will not be, but once a month at the max, I don't think that problem is gonna be a problem.
I don't think so.
And, uh, one other thing, liability insurance. Now, it's the town's building. Are we required to put up the liability insurance, or the, or the town assume that responsibility?
Attorney Edwards? If, if I'm, I may, I mean, there, there are a whole host of questions that need to be answered. Some of them are legal. Um, there, there is a grant that the town received, um, and I, I was able to do some research on, uh, a local, uh, water conservation grant, what, lo, local water conservation fund grant that the town received. One of the stipulations of that, those funds is that the, the, the use be a public use. Any use of that land be a public use. I don't know that the American Legion Post falls into that, so we'd have to check with, uh, the state representatives. It's a pass-through grant that comes from the federal government through the state. Um, there are some questions about, in my mind, and, and I would turn to Attorney Edwards as well in terms of if there's going to be, um, if people are going to imbibe alcohol, if that, you know, there certainly is liability. The town does have its own liability insurance, but that covers town activities, not other people's activities. So there, there would be a question about having their own liability insurance. So there are a whole host of things that would need to be worked out.
Just to find details to make sure that everything will fall in place as we go along, and we don't get to any road bumps to kinda stop us.
But, uh, is the property that the hut is on, is that also tied into the, uh, ball field? Is that all one property?
That's all one contiguous property.
Okay, all right. And my last question, who will assume the responsibility to cut the grass?
We, we currently cut the grass. We would continue to cut the grass. I, I think we, we've got a lot of hurdles before we get to something that, quite that finite. So, but.
Quite a few. Uh, one of the reasons that we wanted to do this, what the main reason was, because we need a permanent place to meet, but also with the town growing, the new housing, there have to be kids. We have a girl scout troop here in town. I grew up with, in scouting, and I'm, I'm sure that some of you or most of you also grew up in scouting. It's something that's very vital to a young man growing up, and we want to be a part of it. And I, we want the town of Springhoek to be a part of it. That's another reason that we're coming to you, asking for permission. I thought.
That's kind of you. Thank you.
When you talk about the liability insurance, you just talked about while y'all are doing the work, correct?
Well, while, while we're there, or the Boy Scouts are there.
Oh, you know, while they're being.
Say, say a parent pulls into the yard and bumps into a child, or whatever, bumps into another car. I was just wanting to make sure that, that we and the town are covered, you know, by a situation.
Okay.
I'm assuming it'd be something like a homeowner's policy or something like that?
It would be commercial liability insurance.
Okay. All right, well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Amazing. Uh, and so it would really just be a matter of how to make it a public use property. You know, how, how could we open it up to?
Well, we would have to, uh, the, the grant is administered through the Natural and Cultural, um, Resources Department of the State. So basically, the same office that the State Historic Preservation Office, uh, is located. We'd have to, uh, confer with them to s, make sure that those uses are appropriate in terms of being considered public. Um, because the American Legion isn't open to everybody. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, you have to, there are certain qualifications to be a legionnaire, correct?
You have to, you have to have served in the military.
Right. So we'll have to check on that.
Until, until previously, you couldn't be in the American Legion unless you actually served during wartime. But now it has been opened up to all members that served in, in the, in the, in the military.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
And so anybody that wanted to join can join as long as you've been in the military.
As long as you've been a member of the military, whether it be, uh, the reserves, whatever, as long as you stood before that, that flag and said, I do, I'll be yours, you are a member, or can be a member.
So there are just some issues we have to explore, preliminary issues, and, um, and then, you know, we can, my recommendation would be to, to get some of these exploratory things out of the way, and then come, reconvene, and, you know, have further discussion around it.
While it's freezing cold for the next two months, anyway, figure out all these line item. It's cold.
My demolition crew, they don't mind the cold.
They don't care. Okay.
But I think we all agree it's a wonderful idea, and we really greatly appreciate the Legion wanting to do that. So I think, we all think it's a wonderful idea. Just wanna make sure that all the details worked out.
Well, I understand that. I appreciate, I appreciate the town giving us the opportunity to do that. You're, you're helping us, and you're also helping the Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
And hopefully, eventually, it'll come back and help the town of Springhoek.
Okay. Thank you for all of that input, uh, from Mr. Deano, as well as Mr. Bass. We're not voting on that tonight, and so we can move right into the reports from the chamber. And let's go with code enforcement.
Sean has a special planning board meeting tonight, so he's not with us, but he did provide his report. That you haven't. Okay.
So, so, um, four oh nine West Main, Andrew is the theater?
No, four oh nine West Main, Mr. Commissioner Griffin, is the, um, the, the abandoned house that's almost directly across from the community building.
Uh, okay.
And, uh, the current property owner had subdivided several of those parcels that are now sitting vacant as well. So that, that house, the last I had checked, it was actually actively for sale, uh, but I don't know what the current status is.
Is that a brick house on the corner, or is that a framed, white-framed?
The white-framed house with clabbered siding.
That says for sale? That the tree fell onto?
That the tree fell onto the garage, yes.
Is that up?
The garage is partially collapsed. That's the, the actual, um, zoning, zoning violation, yeah.
And then, so, so they've been told to get that in compliance, and it's, that's in this fee penalty.
That's correct, yeah.
And then eight oh four East Nash is the place across from, the house across from Bachelors with the log trucks and all that stuff?
That's correct. I have yet to see a site plan from the property owner. Um, and of course, uh, last I rode down there, the vehicles were still in the yard.
And then Hopkins Avenue is that house that they painted black?
That's correct.
And then boarded up property on two ten West Franklin. Which one is that?
Uh, it suffered a fire a while back, um, and, uh, has not been secured.
Hmm, okay.
Ash and Franklin.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's on the right, right?
Yes.
If you cross over sixty-four from Strickland, that's Franklin Street.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. You're welcome. I have, um, these are some of the photos from, uh, Mr. Denton's, uh, well, Denton's Automotive had made significant progress on, um, cleaning the area. Still do have some stacked cars, but it's significantly better. Tires and some of the other materials from the back have been cleaned up. Um, this is, uh, further down on, uh, on East Nash. I believe it's nine oh five. Um, the cars are no longer stacked, so. I don't know if we can see that.
Yep.
So. So we've made some progress, but we've got a ways to go.
All ready? Uh, appreciate you sharing all the details with the code enforcement report. We'll move on to the police chief. Thank you for being here tonight, Chief.
Uh, before I go into this, I just wanna ask a quick question, um, going back on what Dicky was talking about a minute ago. Um, and I could definitely get with the town manager and Michelle on it too, but I, I don't even know if you guys are aware of it, but we, um, put in for a grant for a community, uh, and we were awarded that two weeks ago, where we went, met with Judge Sumner, and we were awarded five thousand dollars. Um, the police department would not mind at all. Uh, you know, once we get into details and figure out everything, going in and taking care of that water bill for the Boy Scouts and for, you know, the post, but, you know, there's a bunch of things that would have to come into play there, you know? Make sure it's inspected, make sure we don't have any leaks, make sure, you know, and I don't know, does the town have a minimum, monthly minimum, or is it just on usage? Yeah, so, I mean, that would be very minimal, and, you know, and we were awarded that, and, you know, putting in next year that we're supporting the Boy Scouts, and we're supporting the post and things like that, we could possibly get more money. So, you know, it's, it's definitely something that, I mean, I would entertain in taking care of that water bill under that grant that we got, if, you know, once all the stars align and everything comes.
That's wonderful.
Together on it. I mean, I don't.
It's all coming together.
I mean, you're talking to maybe a couple hundred dollars a year. I mean, if they're using it twice a month, as long as there's not a minimum. And, you know, once everything is looked at and every, and it's approved, but instead of applying for another grant, I've already got the money for a grant that goes for the community, and putting in towards that will also allow us to possibly get more next year to be able to do more, so.
Show capacity, though, keep giving it to you.
Yeah, we, we asked for four thousand this year, and, uh, Judge Sumner pushed us into five, so we gladly accepted it, just to go for our Kona High stuff, and, you know, backpacks, school backpacks, and all that good stuff. So, you know, once everything gets together and it's built and inspected and all the water lines are good, then, yeah, we would, that's definitely something I would entertain if it came down to it. Wouldn't be an issue at all.
That's wonderful.
Uh, going into this month, uh, as far as listed incident reports, when we had two listed reports, uh, we did have a bunch of calls for service this month, three hundred ninety-nine calls for service, hundred fifteen traffic stops. Uh, we did have a bunch of calls for service this month, 399 calls for service, 115 traffic stops, 193 security checks, uh, six traffic accidents, two domestic calls, nine disturbances, and eight investigations with six cleared. Actually, that six should be a seven. I just cleared another one up this afternoon, uh, with a hit and run, that, with property damage and, um, injury, uh, food line. Uh, we were able to, uh, run a partial tag that we had, and after 7,000 or so entries, we were finally able to figure it out, and we got it on a flock camera in Knightdale, so we do have that one figured out, and we'll be taking warrants on that tomorrow.
193 security checks. That's impressive.
Yeah.
They're doing it every night. And that's a lot of traffic stops, so, keeping it on who's coming in and out of town and keeping us safe. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, like I said, we've got a lot of calls this month. It's a, a lot of calls, but as far as actual, you know, incidents and things like that, we only had two reported ones.
That's right. Thanks for always keeping us safe, Chief.
Before you leave?
Yes, yes.
I would like to thank you, Police Department, you and me and yesterday for that wellness check.
Okay.
I, I mean, it was super.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We did not have any keys out there to fit that apartment. We have some, we don't have them all. And I was headed to Wilson, and by the time that I got to 97 and turned around and went back, came back, you and me and were there, and they were working, and I told them, "Just don't tear my door up."
Yeah. Well, we, we actually had a little bit of a debrief on that this morning. There's, there's something that, that, uh, police officer, and I, I know this because when I worked in Knightdale, we were public safety, we're fire and police.
Right.
And there's a little box on the wall called a Knox box, and there's a key to that box, and to get the key out to get the every, everything in there, so.
And see, they're doing away with it.
Just a little education this morning on that.
We used to have, uh, we used to have a keeper, fit all the apartments.
Yep.
They're doing away with that. And so, um, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Oh, so the Knox box key only goes to the office then? Uh, we'll get in. We can get in.
So, uh, we're gonna try to fix this problem, but they did get in through the window?
Yeah.
Which was good, 'cause when the girl said, "We can't get in," I said, "Well, call in for wellness check."
Yeah.
And by the time I got back, they were there and they were working, and they did find her.
Yeah, a lot of times on those windows, you can, you can push it on the end and, and unlock it to go up just without breaking it, but we've done it so many times, they're, they're pretty much pros at it now.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to the manager's report.
Well, uh, there are a couple things I want to mention. Obviously, they weren't working on cutting the tree down today due to the inclement weather and more, uh, inclement weather anticipated later this week, so, uh, so I have yet to hear what the, um, what the makeup date is for taking the tree down. So, when I know, I'll, I'll, I'll be sure to inform the board and the public, and we'll inform the public as well. Uh, one thing I don't want to forget to mention is the DDB is holding, um, I think it's their third or fourth?
It's their third.
Well, it's the second here. The marketing workshop, but it's, I think it's the fourth actual marketing workshop, but it's the second here in Town Hall next Tuesday at 6:00. Um, so we encourage, uh, all the merchants in town, uh, in the surrounding area. Last time, Steve Brumfield and, um, Brandy Jobe did a great job talking about, um, marketing by way of Facebook and Google in particular. I think they're gonna take that one step further this time around, so a lot of good information. People left that meeting with a lot of, um, uh, good info, but they also had more questions and wanted to delve, delve in deeper, so I encourage all the merchants to attend that and, um, would appreciate it if the chamber would let people know as well. And, um, that, that was about it. Did you all have any questions for me? Oh, I did want to mention the depot project. So, the depot project, the plans are basically done. There are only a few things that, uh, outstanding. We have to have some borings of the, um, the ground out at the depot area to see what the actual, uh, footprint of the footings will be. So, we're, we need to contract with a geotechnical engineer and actually got a, a price from TerraCon, and we need to contract with them to get that done, but that's probably the last little bit we'll have. Bobby has volunteered our crew to actually do the water and sewer services, so we'll be saving some money doing that. And, um, you know, we can be assured that they'll do it and do it well, so.
It's moving along?
It is.
It started, it paused, and now it's about to, uh, go quickly again, I think.
Yeah, the, uh, water distribution project is still in permitting. They're, um, they have, the state has required a, uh, pressure and flow test for the new hydrants, the new proposed hydrants. So, once that Wooton completes that and submits that to the state, I imagine that we'll finally be out of permitting.
Thank you for keeping it going, staying on top of everybody at the state and keep pushing.
It's always incremental.
I know.
Hey, welcome from your planning board meeting. Uh, Manager Deano's already gone over it in detail, and the Commissioners have already asked questions, and the Commissioners have any questions for?
You, you're, um, you're, you're putting a penalty on the house over here on West Main. The house that?
Yes, good evening, council. Everybody, sorry, running a little late. We had a special call being over in Nashville that kept us tied up a little over what we spent. But we are putting a penalty on the house right here on West Main Street.
So, you actually talked to them? Nobody showed up?
Correct, yes, sir.
Have you had any, have they? You had any contact with them since you tried to have that meeting?
None. We sent out several correspondents. We sent out several letters, letting them know the violations, and nobody has responded, called the town, emailed, any type of communication with us. So, we thought by sending the notice of fines and sending the first fine letter, that maybe that will open up some conversation where they will contact the town.
And then, out here across from Bachelors, the house with the log trucks in the yard?
Yes, sir.
You've met with them and explained everything to them?
We did, town manager, I met with myself. We met with them and hearing the lady came to represent the family, we explained to her what she needed to do, turn in site plans and stuff. She sounded like she understood what we were asking for, but we understand that we need to go ahead and also send her a letter out for her fines to let her know that the town is serious about getting this matter resolved.
She did indicate, uh, willingness and understanding of what needed to be done.
She did after having it here. We did ask her to make sure that she did understand. The town manager, Deano, did also send a corresponding email to her, let her know what we had discussed that day also.
Sent her an email with the regulations. There was some confusion in her mind with the rezoning, and I think if the board will recall, uh, most of the board was, was constituted this way at the time. They expressed the desire, I believe it was her son, to submit a site plan, which is a necessary component to complete the, the, the rezoning and the approving the use, permitting the use, and that never happened, so, um, we re, we, Sean and I reiterated that for her, sent her the information.
Okay, thank you. And then the future hearings, the boarded up property and then the tire shop?
Yes, sir.
You've, you've got those scheduled, so you've talked to those people, and they know you got to have a sit-down with them and go over some stuff?
They're getting, we're getting letters received out in the mail this week for the last week of January to have a hearing with those individuals. We have sent letters out to the tire shop asking them to clean up. One time he did do a great outstanding job of moving the tires from right down to right back in where we first started at. So, we're gonna try to get them in and have a conversation with y'all and just ask them, could we get it to meet some type of standard ordinance for compliance and not? Then we have the postal hearing, the fines on them.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the Commissioners? All right. Thank you for being diligent with your work in Spring Hope.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Manager, do you want to add anything to your report? We got the update on the train depot, uh, wastewater treatment projects going on, and most of this will happen in 2025, I guess.
Uh, we will at least be underway, and, um, and the water project and the depot, well underway. The wastewater treatment will probably still be in the planning stages, but, uh, but there, there will be work, uh, in the background going on.
And there's already been so much progress on the water distribution and wastewater treatment plant. There's already been all kinds of projects that I don't think the general public even knows happen.
Uh, yeah, most of what we do, and it's not just Spring Hope, but it, I think it's every community, most of what we do, if we do it well, is in the background and, um, you know, and, you know, people, just let people live their lives, right? That's.
Yeah.
Well, thank y'all for keeping all that going and taking care of the town in the background. Thank y'all, okay? You're all appreciated. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the Commissioners? We'll start with Commissioner Ganey?
Nope.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Commissioner Griffin?
No.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Michelle? All right, well, if there's nothing else, we can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for being here.
Record time, 7:36. That, I think it was shorter than that.
It was in the twenties, wasn't it? I gotta silence yourself.
That's right.